I'll call as the May the 13th, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I will note that we have a quorum. I asked everybody to please stand. We have Mr. James Denton of the Whiffle Baptist Church here for our am示.
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for the freedom that we have in this country, the freedom of making choices, the freedom of making decisions of our own. We thank you for this town that you've given us, this county, the beautiful mountain sides. The beauty that you paint is fantastic. We thank you for the sunrises and the sunsets. And Lord, it just reminds us of just how good you are. Thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, the health that we have. And we pray now that you'll be with this group as they seek guidance, as they try to make decisions for this area, that all these decisions will be good for us to live and to continue to enjoy the freedom that we have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Everyone, please throw in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. It's Dr. Brennan. It's nice to see you. We'll move along with our agenda. We'll go right into it. There was no one signed up for Citizens Time. So we'll move on to our first order of business is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion. We approve those minutes as presented.
Do I have a second? Any discussion, any corrections or changes to the minutes? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horning?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Minutes are approved seven to zero. Next order of business is the payment of invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pay the invoice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Is there any invoice any member would like to discuss or ask the question about? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Pay the invoices seven to zero. We've run into new business. I have a report from the Building and Grounds Committee.
Building and Grounds Committee met and we had one subject review and offer from the attorney for that Hoover property and we turned it down. It wasn't a worthwhile offer. And also this coming Friday, if I'm right, Mr. Dalton, Building and Grounds is going to tour all the county buildings and properties this Friday and hope everybody can make it. That's it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on Building and Grounds turning down the request, the proposed offer on the piece of, on the right-of-way vacated? Here none, we'll move on to the next order of business. If I can find it here. Economic Development Committee report.
Economic Development Committee met on May 9th, reviewed the RC Flyers' request to use Progress Park as a flying site. In order to not set a precedence, the committee recommends that the board deny RC Flyers' request. So that's the recommendation from the committee.
We have recommendation to try to deny the request.
Can we, Mr. Chairman, we discuss that just a minute?
Yes, sir.
It says here that Art Davis has given the board permission to use him. I mean, why are we denying him?
And if I might follow timeline, in November, oh, no, excuse me, October 22nd minutes, it was this RC Flyers Club Supervisor, Housman, reported that he had been contacted by a member of the RC Flyers Club requesting the use of the inland port area in Progress Park. He recommended that the board allow the RC Flyers Club to use the area. Mr. Dalton explained that there might be pertinent information available that would affect their decision and asked that the request be referred to the Economic Development Committee for discussion. Chair McDaniel referred to issue to the Economic Development Committee. That was in October. As far as I know, it was never referred. You brought it back up in November and asked about it. I was told that they would need to get Mr. Art Davis' permission and they would have to carry their own insurance. So they secured his permission. And matter of fact, you can see that the letter of permission that he gave him was dated on January the 9th. And they also have a certificate of insurance. Mr. Jeff Hill, who's the president of the club, called me probably three weeks ago or more and said that he had that, you know, they wanted it in place before they moved anything down there and, you know, that I could, he could mail it to me or I could just stop by and get it. And I told him I'd stopped by sometime that week and I apologized. I did not get there and I went today. He was out of town. He was in Kentucky. But, yeah, the requests started in October. If there were any discussion, it seems that there would be ample time to talk about this before, you know, May of 2014. Yeah, I don't understand the delay and, you know, I don't really understand the motion.
Mr. Dalton, or where was the, Art Davis was going to give them permission? What part of Progress Park?
It's an inland port area down close to Lane Enterprises. However, one of the discussions I had with Mr. Hill was that one of the problems that presented itself earlier was that some people were flying over Lane Enterprises as they came in to make a landing. And so he said that that would be no problem, that they would move the landing strip back farther away from Lane Enterprises. I went down there today. They have it looking extremely, you know, good. They've got it mowed. They've got it marked off. They've, they have their stuff down there. There is not a drink can, a piece of trash, even a gum wrapper down there. It's extremely clean. They have the, you know, container that they have down there have what I consider to be a rather strict set of rules posted. So I don't understand what the reasoning for denying them the request would be. And I also don't understand why it's gone from October to May.
Well, I can explain it, Mr. Housman, if you'd like. I think I've talked to you about it. First of the issue was we withdrew, withdrew the property from Mr. Art Davis to construct the site down there. Property, and they moved. And the property is still being reworked on by the contractor. There's low places, et cetera down there. So Mr. Davis doesn't have the property. And I talked to Mr. Art Davis and he said, he gave it to him just so that they'd leave him alone. I reminded him, his contract is not to sublease any of the property. So he doesn't have the right to grant them any permission to do that. Second, I think, is the issue of whether, what they're doing with property, whether there are drones, the whole issue of getting it. And that delay is, if Branch comes back tomorrow, which they may, to work, are they in the way or not? So you have a, and so...
But this discussion was ongoing. I kept asking if we didn't let them go back down there, was there another place? You know, and I even said, can we help them find another place? But then when, you know, the, you know, the great work was done and they, you know, they asked only after all that was finished, you know, could they, could they go back down there?
It's not finished, Mr. Housman. You're discussing that item with them, not through the channels if...
I tried. I brought it up in a board meeting. It was supposed to be referred to the Economic Development Committee. That was in October. I brought it back up again. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how to go through the channels more than I, you know, more than I have.
And we talked to Mr. Davis, or I talked to Mr. Davis, not we talked to him, and discussed it in several times. And Art still knows that that property is withdrawn until we finish the grading down there. Branch has a warranty period on that of one year to get grass, those potholes, those water areas, et cetera, out of there.
But we also talked, you know, when you brought it up, we also, we also discussed maybe lot 24 other, but we didn't really want to start letting people in on lot 24. So we ruled that out. And nothing else has been discussed since then. I mean, it's been brought up.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the, this was the first time it went to the Economic Development Committee. And in our discussion, we just, the members of the committee just felt like, you know, Progress Park is our industrial engine. There could be a lot of liability. Yes, they may have insurance, but if there was an issue, you know, it might make the current residents of Progress Park uncomfortable. Plus additional request, where would it stop? So that was the rationale.
But I mean, we, but we used to let them use it. And then we just withdrew it because of the construction. I mean, I can understand if we're not getting, letting them go back because the construction's not done. But I mean, if it's other than that, I mean, I just, I don't see our reasoning for not letting them down there.
Well, that's just the recommendation from the committee. So if somebody would want to make a motion, I guess they could. In contrary to...
But I mean, as far, it shouldn't be on the table at this time, seeing, not that area, because it's, it's not been released. It's still under construction. If Branch comes back in there this week or next week or next month, it's still, it's still not finished. That's what you're saying.
Yeah. Bill, have they finished?
No, sir. Just recently, yesterday, they're out there with a motor grader leveling out things, restoring rocks and things, and they get up there planting the trees around the small water basin. They're doing the punchwork there.
Have they finished the work on the inland port area, that pad at the bottom with all those low water places?
I don't think they've been done yet.
Okay. Well, it's, it's always, it's all grassy and green. I mean, I, you know, drove down there today. I didn't, you know, I didn't see anything. I mean, it just looks to me like if a group of With County citizens have a good wholesome activity that they want to, you know, to participate in and share with other people. They've had Boy Scouts down there. They've had church groups down there. They, they certainly do not damage anything in any way. They know that if there's any, any prospective industry, if anybody says that they want to come, that they are out on a moment's notice. I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I do not understand why we, you know, you know, choose, you know, why this motion is not to allow them to do it. Now, they will, you know, they have set up down there based on what I told them, and I told them what I thought was, was appropriate. Because I was told, you know, they had, they'd have to have permission from Mr. Davis. They got that. They've said, you know, they'd have to have insurance. They, they got that. So based on what I was told, I told them that, you know, that they were, you know, that they were back.
Does anybody else have a comment?
Well, I sure don't see nothing wrong with them using it. I'd rather have them fly an airplane down there than have a cow on them.
But what was, what was the complaint that Lane Industries, didn't they, they had a complaint about them flying?
Well, previously, they had been flying over, dive bombing, they had land, well, wrecked or whatever, left a plane on top of the building, some other thing.
And that was one of, you know, the points of discussion that I had with, with Mr. Hill. And, you know, he assured me that that would not happen again.
Gary, the problem is, they don't meet as a group. They go down there individually and people flying all the time.
Right. I went down and read their...
So he's not there, so he can't guarantee anything except when he's there.
Okay. Maybe guarantee was not the right word. Yeah, he, you know, would address that with the club and make sure that everybody understood that that was, that that was not appropriate. Certainly, you know, nobody can guarantee anything. I understand that.
I have a question. You know, if you watch the national news, this thing of drones, when I think about RC Flyers, I'm thinking about a little model plane that some guys have control over. Are they flying drones radio controlled? Can they go out of sight? Can, do you know those answers?
They have some, some very expensive radio controlled airplanes that, Mr. Hill, you asking me, you know, what the, what the range is on that radio controlled plane? I don't know. I can't, I can't answer that.
That's a concern in the industrial park, you know? Those things can have an eight, 10-foot wingspan. And if you watch the news about the US Air plane almost hitting one, we don't have air traffic that low, I realize. But we do have important industry up on the hill there. And if those things can have a range of something, whether it's half a mile or a mile, and if you push the right buttons and it don't come back, then you wonder where it is. And I was thinking little model planes, but obviously, we're not talking about little model planes.
In the, in the list of rules, I'd have to go back and read them again, but it, it talks about that nothing can be, you know, flown out of sight.
But if, if they, but if they lose control of, of one of those planes, and that could happen, and it goes to the northeast and flies into the substation and knocks out power to the, to the industry out there, are we liable for their loss?
I don't know. But, you know, you know, Mr. Reeves, that's kind of, I know it's, you know, maybe a possible scenario, but you, you know, we could develop a lot of possible scenarios, you know, for, for anything, not just for, you know, for RC Flyers.
Yeah, stuff like that can, can happen. If you don't think it can happen, just look at the balloon that went up down there and killed three people, you know? I'm sure they didn't want to hit that guy, that telephone, or whatever electrical was.
Well, I will say that I am, I am not in favor of the motion. I think it's, I think it's a good, solid club that has, you know, rules and regulations. And, you know, it's a piece of land that right now is not being used. And I think that it would be, you know, a good thing for the Board of Supervisors to allow, you know, a With County organization made up of With County citizens to, you know, to use it.
Well, we have no motion. I mean, the recommendation was from the Economic Development Committee to not let them use lot 30 for their flying their planes. And as far...
No, they, excuse me, sir. What it is, it's do, to deny their request to use Progress Park. The motion says that the Economic Development Committee reviewed RC Flyers' request to use Progress Park as a flying site to not set precedence. The committee recommends the board deny RC Flyers' request. So we're denying the request to use anything in Progress Park.
Well, I think it's a question, as right now, we, we haven't turned that property back over to Mr. Davis for his use anyway. If it's still construction to be, to be formed down in lot 30.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll call for the question. We'll see how the, how the vote goes.
Okay. We have a request, we have a motion from the Economic Development Committee to deny the request of RC Flyers to use Progress Park, lot 30. Come from the committee, it doesn't need a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
No.
Yes.
No. No was the vote against progress. No.
Yes.
Yay.
Yay.
No.
No.
Yes. The motion passes four to three.
May I ask a request?
Yes.
Does someone from here get in touch with them and explain them, you know, to them what has happened? And also to let them know that I told them the honest truth to the best of my knowledge because they've moved, you know, things back down there. And, you know, based on my conversations and the information I feel like I was given, I told them they could go back. And now, you know, they are being removed. So if someone, you know, an authority, you know, get in touch...
They've never contacted us, Gary. Their contact's been through you the whole time.
Do you have their contact information?
Yeah, I can get it. I mean, okay, is, so...
Will you give that to Mr. Dalton? Mr. Dalton, then could you contact them?
So, I mean, I, and let me understand, Mr. Dalton, are you saying that contact through me was not appropriate?
Well, I'm just saying they never contacted through, that I know of through here, that there was never a request.
Okay. Well, and I, it, it came, it came to me. I brought the request to the board in October of last year. So it's not that they did not contact the, the board. They just contacted the board through, you know, a supervisor, which a lot of people do.
I have another comment on that, a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Housman, to try to make something good out of this, is there room for them at the fairground?
The fairground in...
Rural Retreat.
In Rural Retreat? I, I don't know.
It's...
Well, I don't have, I don't know anything about it. So I'm just totally ignorant about the space they need. But that's a resolution that would seem appropriate to me if, if somebody wants to make that suggestion to them.
And the fairgrounds is, I guess it is as big as...
But do we have control of the fairgrounds?
No, we lease it to the...
We lease it to the Rural Retreat.
With County Rural Retreat Fire Center.
Association.
Can they sublease it?
They, they sublease to the tractor club, Antique Tractor Club, and they, they have a sublease to the...
And to the horse club.
Blade Mountain, Blade Mountain.
Blade Mountain Saddle Club.
Saddle Club.
Gary, do you, do you want to check with them and have them to look at that? You know, they got the pulling thing up there. I mean, it's open.
I'll, I'll drive up there and, and look and...
There's parking there and there's possibly a permanent home farm, Gary. That, that thing at inland port site, lot 30, could end in a week. We know that. But that'd be a permanent home farm.
I will, I certainly will, you know, we'll talk to Mr. Hill. I'll give Mr. Dalton his contact information and so that I can be clear from this point on if they need to, to discuss anything or contact anything, who should it be?
Well, it needs to come to the county office through the county administrator, then, then to the board, then to the board.
Okay. So calling a member of the Board of Supervisors is not sufficient? It needs to go through the, the county office?
No. I mean, they, they can talk to you, but it's like putting things on the agenda is, is seven days prior. You know, we need some, something in writing, a written request. If they contact you, that's fine. If you want to tell them to do a written request to the Board of Supervisors, I think that's appropriate. Here and then, I'll move on with agenda. We have the BJCCCA minimum rent, minimum random of agreement. Mr. Dalton?
This is a continuation of Department of Criminal Justice grant that we have. We've worked through the juvenile probation and the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court to do this. It's administered through the Department of Social Services. You also have the Director of Court Services that's signed that. And we are the fiscal agents for that and we accept or have the oversight of managing the funds themselves. And I would request that we approve that on a continual basis. On an annual basis, they divert a lot of juveniles away from the detention center, which saves the county a lot of money.
I guess, I hope y'all have read the minimum random of agreement. Do I have a motion to accept this?
I may, I'd say move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Horning?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is Memorial Day Ceremony. The Wall of Honor Committee would like to invite you to the Memorial Day Ceremony to be held on Sunday, May the 25th, 2014, at 1:30 PM at the War Memorial in Withers Park and join the Town Council and Rural Retreat Town Council on the stage behind the podium. Chaplain Captain Jeffrey A. Hicks will be the guest speaker. The Memorial Day Ceremony has been a inspiration, inspirational ceremony for our county for the past 21 years, and we hope that you all will be able to attend. Please RSVP to Janet Woods at 223-2505. I hope everybody can attend. There's nothing else that we need to do for that, Mr. Dalton?
If everybody that's going to attend, if they'll just let Martha know, she'll send the list over to Ms. Wood.
Okay. Just everybody let Martha know within the next few days, next day or so, if you're going to be able to attend the ceremony. Next item on the agenda is Chantel Cable. Mr. Dalton, you want to speak to this?
It's just a notice that they're having a channel change. It's effective on the 29th. They're, they're required to provide that notice as for information. It should win everybody's bills that have a cable TV or Chantel service.
Next item on the agenda is Tourism Committee resignation. We have a resignation from Mr. David Manley, resigning from the Tourism Committee. He was the chairman, he's been heard as JIDA Executive Director, and he feels that he will have, wouldn't have the time to spend on the Tourism Committee. He wants to note and thank Mr. Hale for having confidence in appointing him to that board. And, Mr. Hale, do you have a nominee in mind for the Tourism Committee Board?
No, I had a question about it, though, that y'all need to help me with. If, if, does that appointment absolutely have to come from the district? If we have something, somebody that's uniquely qualified that could help with the efforts and the Tourism Committee, is there anything that says they have to come from the district?
I don't have the, that little item that y'all adopted, but my understanding is each board member gets to appoint or nominate somebody for appointments.
Well, I'd like to let them check on that, and we'll take it up at the next board meeting, and I'll make a recommendation.
Okay. Do we have to accept this resignation, Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting Mr. Manley's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes, we accept Mr. Manley's resignation from the Tourism Committee. Okay, next item on the agenda is May the 6th, 2014, abstract of the votes. Mr. Dalton?
As required by law, the Electoral Board has presented you with the results of the elections, and for that to be recorded in the minutes that those were presented.
Do we need to accept that?
No, it's just a-
Noted.
Noted, it'll be forever in the minutes.
Congratulations, Mr. Jack Honey, he's here tonight. Okay, Mr. Dalton, is there any other business to bring forward to the board tonight?
I understand that the Fire and Rescue Committee may have some possible or potential nominations for the With County Rescue Squad.
Mr. Housman?
The, the Fire and Rescue Committee would like to, to nominate Mr. Mike Forrest and Mr. Walter Mickey Bass as, you know, two members to go on the With County Rescue Squad Board of Directors.
Okay, we have a motion come from committee, it doesn't need a second. All in favor of appointing Mike Frost, Forrest and Mickey Bass to the With County Board, With County Rescue Board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Dalton, will you inform Mr. Bass and Mr. Forrest of their appointments?
And, and Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing on our Fire and Rescue Committee meeting, it's supposed to be Monday at eight o'clock. I'd like to ask if we could delay that until, until 10:00. Mr. James Armbrister sent me an email, you know, said that the Red Mines Rescue Squad Board of Directors would like to, to meet with us. And Mr. Dalton and I have another meeting at nine o'clock that morning, a Cryfa meeting. But it shouldn't take an hour. And since, you know, Mr. Armbrister sent it to me as a supervisor, I will send that on down to the, to the county office.
Mr. Hale, do you have any problems with meeting at 10:00?
No, that'd be fine.
I have any problem either, and that'd be fine.
Okay.
Is he going to inform every, all the other board members, or they?
Oh, he is the one that emailed me, so I will, I'll copy everybody, my response, and ask him to, you know, to let them know.
Okay, so the Fire and Rescue Committee meeting will be at 10:00 on Monday instead of at eight, eight AM. Okay, next item on the agenda is the informational package. All the board members have that and can agree with that. Mr. Dalton, is there any other business to bring forward to the board tonight?
I do not, but I think there's a couple of board members may have.
Okay, that's my next question. Does any board member have any matters to bring forward to the board tonight?
I had two, I had two things, but after our previous conversation here, I don't know whether I need to bring this up, or whether I need to tell him to call the, over here, or what, but anyway. One of them is, I need, if at all possible, for you to, you or someone to attend the Water Committee meeting next Tuesday, because I've got, I'm going to be out of town.
I can attend at what?
It's 9:30.
9:30.
Can you do that?
And that's Tuesday?
Yeah.
I can do that.
And I'll, I'll go ahead and bring this other one up. There's a guy over in Spiegel, I mean, I'll tell you, his name's Chad Hale, or Chad Stewart. Sorry, yeah.
I thought of that.
He, he doesn't live on Route 21, but the water line is close enough to his house that, that we're telling him he has to hook up. He agreed to set the meter where we have already set the meter, right? The meter's already set?
Mm-hmm.
Then he came and he said that he cannot use that meter because of a swamp, and he cannot get anybody to dig a line through the swamp to put it in. So the Water Committee agreed that we would move the water, move the meter down to the intersection, which is where his driveway comes in off of a different road. But the stipulation that the Water Committee said was that we would move it down there if he was going to hook up. Or I'm pretty sure that's what our stipulation was. He's saying now that he's not going to hook up, but he still wants it moved down there. And, I mean, I'm just telling you what he told me. And what he told me was that he needs to know by Friday what we're going to do about it, and if we're not doing anything about it, he's going to call his lawyer. So to, to satisfy him and to do what he would like, I will make a motion that we move the water meter down there. But now, if it stops there, then it stops there, whatever. But I will make that as a motion.
But where he, whether he hooks up or not, he still has to pay the minimum, minimum charge.
Yeah, his, his argument is that if, that if he sells that place in the next couple of years, then whoever buys it, if they wanted to hook up to the county water, they would have to pay a thousand dollar hook up to have the water meter moved down there.
So that's, you're making that motion?
I'm making the motion, I mean, now where it goes from there is up to y'all.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Horni's motion to move the water meter down to the new location?
I'll second it, put it on the floor.
Any discussion?
It was the cost to move meter.
The water department will have to move the contracts already finalized.
Well, you'll leave the yoke where it is, let's pull the meter and leave the yoke there.
Yeah, we have to pay it and go back to the main line and pick it all up and turn off the corpse stuff.
It's not under the pavement or anything?
No, his driveway, several feet off the main line, I believe.
Right, right.
So there's additional lines, it's just not going to settle, a meter out off the main line. It's a tap. Is it Farm River?
No, it's Zion Church Road, yeah. I wanted to call it Ward Branch, but that's the other end.
So you've got to go there and then his driveway is all-
And we have to bore under 21, don't we?
I mean, the issue is, where it is now, he, he's saying he can't find anybody that will, would run it.
That's what he's saying.
If that's true, then that makes it difficult to justify-
I mean, we're, we have to move it anyway.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if that's true, but if he's done due diligence, then...
I will tell you that the county, the county, the way I understand it is the county gave him a name of a contractor that they thought would do it, and that contractor came in there and looked at it, and he said, "I cannot put it in."
That's a qualified opinion to me, that it can't be done.
But I mean, the, like I said, the Water Committee originally said, you know, "We'll move it as long as you intend to hook to it." And his statement was, "I am not hooking to it, but I want it moved anyway."
You know, the issue is whether you spend that money in the rope or several thousand dollars, put it somewhere that's not going to be used.
Right. That was the Water Committee's argument, was, I mean, why do we spend extra money to put it down there if, if he's never intends to use it? But I mean, I can understand his argument, you know, if he does sell the property, then that would be a selling point, is it's got county water right there.
Well, help me understand this. If he sells the property and somebody wants the water, would we not put water in for him?
We would, but it would, it would, they would have to pay the connection fee, which would be a thousand dollars, right?
Or whatever it is that's down there.
Why would he put the meter in a place where it can't be hooked?
Because he signed for it there.
He signed for it there. Oh, well.
Well, I mean, I, I'm at a loss as to know why we would move it right now, just to, basically, what he's asking us to do is to move it to improve the value of his property.
That he's never going to hook to?
Yeah, I, you know, now, I don't, do we, since I've been here, we haven't, but maybe, you know, I'm finding out quick, I don't know everything. But do we give waivers to people? Have we, have we ever given waivers to people?
You mean like a waiver that says he doesn't have to hook up?
Well, I mean, have we ever run into a situation where the county has said that it is not doable?
Oh.
And, you know, because it's not doable, you know, you have a waiver?
Well, where is that, I don't think it's any different than the intersection, Breezy Creek Road, where we ran the water line through the creek and that swamp. It's no more difficult than that.
Do, the county engineer sitting back there, what's he thinking about?
Do you think it's any different than going through that swamp?
I don't know, the swamp may be bigger, but I mean, I don't know. I think, I think the water line can be put through the swamp, personally, but I haven't went over there and walked out in it. And I mean, I mean, I know when you get into eastern end of the state, and I mean, that's all they've got is swamps. So I mean, they put water lines through them.
Well, Gene, as far as moving the meeting out there, in, in all honesty, I could go, and I could look, and still wouldn't know.
Right, yeah. Well, I was going to say, I mean, that's kind of the way I am, I mean-
Bill, have you been out there?
Yeah, it's damp, it's wet in the winter, it's, like you said, it's no different than no air flow down there from the creeks. There'd be a cost, because you have to put it in a certain depth and restore it, put it back, I think it's a cost, if you're going to put it on water, it'd be more than just just putting a line up without.
Well, and, and also part of his argument is for, if he, if he moves, if we move it to the end of his driveway, he, he still argues that he cannot go up to the side of his driveway, because there's some kind of clay tiles down there where they drained the swamp years ago. That's his argument for not hooking up to it.
Would you clarify his name again? You made a mistake the first time.
Chad Stewart.
Okay.
Mr. Dalton, can, can we make a requirement that if we move the meter, can we require him to hook to it? If we move it, if, if he's not going to hook to it, we're not going to move it?
I think one of the other issues we talked about, if you move the meter, it goes beyond the 350. Yeah, that was the other issue.
If, if you move the meter where he wants it at now, it's beyond the 350, which means he doesn't even have to pay the minimum monthly bill. But Bill, in your expert opinion, Nick, the water line can be put in from where the meter's at now?
It could be down, very deep enough, it's only in the wet areas, in the intermed. No different than creeks or creeks than when we removed the main line.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to move the water meter. Is there any, any other further discussion? Let me be clear, he signed off on where it is now? Yes. Okay. Is there any other further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Because I brought it up, aye.
No.
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 And the chair votes no. Motion fails six to one. Does any other member have any other business to bring forward to the board tonight?
Yeah, I want to discuss something just a minute. As you know, we're approaching the BDOT's promise to do some rural roads in July. This is not a motion, it's just for discussion. Right-of-way for these rural roads paved in place, we have to get some agreements for right-of-way of five feet or three feet. And just to make it clear, my opinion is that those kind of efforts improve the property value. And I'm happy to hear that putting a meter on property improves the value of the property. Gary, you might use that. But I'm not in favor of buying any of these right-of-ways or, or doing any fence work for these people. And what if this becomes a reality? I'm going to move that we stop the road wherever we have a right-of-way problem. If folks want the road, it, it improves the value of their car, because they're not going to have the maintenance. They can actually drive a clean car if they got a surface road. It'll cut down on the dust and will improve the value of their property. So I'm just totally against any kind of an agreement to buy property for a five-foot right-of-way adjustment.
And I'm in agreement with Mr. Hale, I mean, you know, if we have one landowner that, that wants to stop the, the progress of the road being paved, and pave it up to that area and stop, and basically gives the benefit to the rest of the citizens up till that point.
And maybe we ought to put down the agenda to one BDOT here at the day meeting and-
We have a secondary road here in, Thursday, May 29th, first of January 49th. That's an important issue. The government, Mr. Hale, the road you're speaking of, I think, has three million dollars allocated to it.
Three point three.
If you stop that road, that immediately leaves about five other roads.
Are going to get fixed.
I got a list, you want it?
No, there not going to be any more over near here for a while, bud. Coy, help.
I mean, Stumpford Road and some of the others, just move it back. And I guess, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is this on rural rustic roads or any roads? Because- or just for the future? How is that determined?
Well, my, my opinion is this, and it's pretty straightforward. As long as the road is staying along a property line, it's good. I mean, that's an adjustment of the rightaway. But if it dissects a piece of property, then there is damage. That's just my opinion, especially with rural land or farmland or undeveloped land, that if it's an adjustment of the rightaway and a lot of these descriptive easements need three feet or need five feet and the maximum on this road is eight feet and we've reduced it by almost 200% of the land that's going to be affected. Because we've been out there four times now and adjusted and adjusted. And, but a general statement is that, to me, if it's a rightaway adjustment or a property line adjustment of a nominal or minimal amount, but if you dissect a piece of property, whether it's a building lot or if you make it unbuildable by our planning commission, then you've damaged that lot or that property.
Basically, the description you gave us is on rural rustic road conditions where you're sticking on the rightaway, making minimum corrections to the route. Then it becomes under all the conditions, you can't pay them for the rightaway, but what they pay for is for fence.
And that's a question of the value of the fence. The ones we're talking about have little value. You know, for rural rustic, the BDOT's opinion is 16 feet wide and two feet shoulder, if you use that term broadly. So you're up to 20 feet and with these 30-foot rightaways that we've got in the county on the old roads, if it's not totally level land, you, you got a problem there. You've got to adjust on the hillside, one way or the other, to get room to get it in there.
I guess, hell, everybody's got some investment in the road. They're making a personal investment if they're moving 20 feet of fence. What if, hold on, Stuntford Road, I'll use Coy's up there, one fence, a long ways, this far off the road, you've got to move it because, and they may not have the means.
I think Coy ought to help them.
I am, I'm going down to watch them every day they have a work. They should start a line for them today.
They don't make you lemonade yet about starting on the first July.
Well, I'll call, I got these first of all.
That's all I've got. I know you're trying to set a record here.
We're doing good.
I feel like Joe, if you don't give a rightaway, it's all for a road. A man don't want to be in a shit.
But we shouldn't penalize the rest of the people on that road prior to that.
Well, they're required under the secondary road plan. You can't pay them for the rightway. The only thing you can reimburse them for is the venture. That's, that's how I understand it. I may be wrong, but that's how I understand it.
Joe, are they asking for compensation for the land?
Got one, it's rumored, you know how rural rumors go. And I, there's, there's a message here. If you want the road fixed, cooperate.
I agree with that.
That road's been on the agenda for 20 some years, hasn't it?
Been on ever since I've been here.
So now we're there and it's all over a fence post or two, so.
Okay, does any other board member have anything to bring forward? Here and then, I declare this meeting adjourned.